I'm going to call this Macomb Township's zoning board of appeals meeting to order. The time is 7:09. As I believe the recording may show, we had some technical difficulties that we had to work through getting everybody connected. But we are now underway and we should be good to go. So with that, I'm going to call it to order and I am going to recite the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to have everybody on mute, but please feel free to say it along with me on your end. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Very good. With that being done, we are going to move on to the next order of business, which is the approval of the agenda items. One thing I would just want to note before we get into this is that I'm going to recommend when we get to it that we postpone item D, the review of ZBA rules and procedure, to another night that does not back up to a holiday so we can make sure we get everybody out of here on time. Now with that, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Please, when you do this, make sure that you identify yourself and anyone who seconded it identify themselves.
This is member Slosson. I move to approve the agenda items.
Motion by member Slosson is their support.
DeCoster supports.
Mr. DeCoster supports that motion and I am going to do all votes tonight as a roll call and I'm going to maintain the roll call portion this evening. We're having, like I said, we're having some technical difficulties. I just want to make sure we minimize potential issues. With that being said, member Slosson?
Yes.
What is your vote in this motion? Very good. Uh, member DeCoster?
Yes.
Member Posey? Uh, just a second. Member Posey might be hard muted. Uh, go ahead, member Posey.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. There we go. Member Piper?
Yes.
And member Tuckfield votes yes. That motion is passed. The next item is item five, which is the approval of the previous meeting-
Chairman Tuckfield? May I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes.
You didn't call the roll, item number three.
I did not call the roll, thank you very much. Uh, with that, I'm going to call the, I'm going to call the roll. Um, member Tuckfield is present. Member Posey?
Present.
Member Slosson?
Present.
Member Piper?
Present.
Member DeCoster?
Present.
That being said, all members are present. Thank you, member Posey. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Uh, the next item would be the approval of the previous meeting minutes. That's item number five. Do I have a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes?
This is member Slosson.
There'd be a motion to approve by member Slosson. Is there support?
This is Piper. I would second that motion.
Motion by Slosson, supported by Piper, to approve the previous minute, meeting minutes. And I'm going to call the roll again. Uh, member Slosson?
Yes.
Member Piper?
Yes.
Member DeCoster?
Yes.
Member Tuckfield votes yes. Member Posey?
Yes.
That motion passes and the previous meeting minutes are approved. Item six is new business. The first item on our agenda tonight is election of officers. Typically, we wouldn't do this this late in the year, but with pandemic and other items going through, we have not gone through this process yet and I believe our bylaws require us to do it at the first meeting of the year. Uh, with that, we have three positions open for nominations tonight, the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. Um, and anybody who wishes to make a nomination for those can make so and in the designated areas. And then after we've nominated for each position, we will have a vote to elect on that nomination. So first, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the secretary position. Are there any nominations for that position?
Chairman Tuckfield, I will make a decision to continue with member Slosson as the secretary.
Nomination by member Posey. Um, I'm actually not sure on this. Do I need support on nominations or is one person sufficient?
You should have support.
Okay. Is there support on that nomination?
This is Dave Piper. I will support that nomination.
All right. Member, nomination of Ms. Slosson by Ms. Posey, support by Mr. Piper. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'm going to close the nomination. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead. I apologize. Nope, go ahead.
No problem. I'm going to close the nominations for secretary. Um, just procedurally, because it's been a year since we've done this. Mr. Assorti, is it appropriate to do a nomination and then vote? Or should we do all the nominations and then all the votes?
Whatever you prefer. Either one is fine.
All right.
I know you asked me earlier and it would be completely appropriate if the individual abstains from the vote on appointing themselves.
Okay. Very good. And I had asked Mr. Assorti that for the record. The question was just if an individual gets nominated and the votes on them, is it appropriate for them to abstain? And I believe he's answering in affirmative. So with that, I'm going to call a vote on the nomination of Ms. Slosson as a secretary. Um, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Yes would indicate acceptance of her as secretary. No would indicate not acceptance. That, I'm going to call the roll. Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoster?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Um, and Ms. Slosson, you are welcome to abstain if you would like to.
Yes, I will abstain. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. With that, member Slosson has been appointed secretary for a term that roughly corresponds with the end of the year, assuming we have a meeting of the first month of next year. Uh, next will be, we'll do vice chairman. Um, I will open the floor for nominations. Are there any nominations for vice chairman?
Uh, yes, this is member Slosson and I would like to recommend, um, member DeCoster as our vice chairman.
Motion to nominate member DeCoster by member Slosson. Is there any support?
This is Dave Piper. I will second that as well.
All right. Uh, Ms. Slosson nominated Mr. DeCoster and Mr. Piper supported it. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close the nominations and we will move on to a vote for Mr. DeCoster for vice chair. Yes would indicate acceptance. No would indicate non-acceptance. Um, Ms. Slosson?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Uh, that motion passes, assuming Mr. DeCoster would wish to abstain from that vote.
That is correct.
All right. With that, Mr. DeCoster has been elected as the vice chair. Next, we will open the nominations for chairperson. Are there any nominations for chairperson?
Member DeCoster, I will nominate the current chairman, Mr. Tuckfield, to continue his role as chairman of the ZBA.
Nomination on the floor? Go, go ahead.
Uh, this is member Slosson. Support it.
All right. Uh, motion by Mr. DeCoster to nominate Mr. Tuckfield for chairman, supported by Ms. Slosson. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations and we'll move on to a vote. Um, Mr. DeCoster? Ms. Slosson?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Uh, and I abstain. Member Tuckfield abstains. That motion passes. Um, thank you, everyone, for your involvement in the board. I know we all work together well and we'll get through the rest of this year and thank you for your confidence. Um, next, we have two variants, or a variance request, item B, six B. This is a variance request from 10.0331.5 to allow a 216 square foot accessory building, shed, where only 150 square foot is allowed. Uh, this is, this address is located at 48783 Presidential. Um, I'm not going to try to pronounce the name of the petitioner because I don't think I will do it accurate justice, but I believe they have a representative in the audience who will be able to speak presently. Um, and the permanent parcel is 0830126012. Uh, with that, Mr. Box, could you take us through the preliminary, the findings from the planning department and explain this issue to us?
Sure. Uh, as you mentioned, this is a variance request for a shed located on Presidential Drive, which is south of 22 Mile and west of Tilts Road, located in section 30. So this process actually started almost a year ago and was supposed to be on an agenda, I believe, December or January, and there was an issue with advertising. Uh, and then it was going to be out in February and the petitioner was not able to make it and then everything COVID happened. So here we are, almost a year later, discussing this. But my understanding, because this does date back to prior to my being with the township, but my understanding is this is a shed that was built without a permit being pulled initially. And after the shed was built, it was found that the permit was needed. So when they went to go pull the permit, it was found to be too large for our ordinance, as you mentioned, 10.0331.5. It was 66 feet, uh, square feet larger than, than what is allowed. Uh, and that was found, again, after it's already been built and then they went to pull the permit. Um, the property itself, it is in the rear of the, the property of the residential house. The property backs up to a condo development and I believe there is a buffer wall behind it. Um, it was a little bit hard to tell from the aerial I was looking at, but it looks like there's a wall there. There's definitely a wall of vegetation there. Planning has, has reviewed this, this shed. Uh, there's sheds throughout the neighborhood. Um, and it's not the ideal process to go through, to build it prior to, to pull a permit. Uh, but overall, I think the, the department is in favor of approval.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any questions from the members to the planning director? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next section and this is where I would ask the owners' representative to speak. Please, sir, I'm going to unmute you. I think I'm going to be able to do that manually. Um, and if you could, state your name and record for the address and give any comments you feel would be appropriate to add to this. And I believe you're unmuted now, sir.
Yes. My name is Edmund. I'm, uh, Jack Paloka Sun. I'm, uh, speaking at 48783 Presidential Drive, a shed in the back. Um, we built, we had an existing shed because the concrete was on there since 2009 with permits and everything, but the old shed was falling apart, so we just built a new one. So I didn't think I needed a permit just to build the same one back. And I have a four-foot overhang that is not usable, obviously, for my garbage bins outside. So I measured it differently. I measured the useful space on the inside of the shed to where you guys measured from the outside, even though I have open four feet for my garbage bin. That is-
Very good. And thank you. Your, your name, sir, if I can, was, was Paloka? That was your last name?
Edmund Paloka.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Um, all right. Uh, do we have any questions for the petitioner from the board? Hearing none, I am going to open this up to the public and if the public could bear with me, I just want to make sure that I do this correctly. Um, you are able to raise your hand if you wish to talk. If you're on a phone, the proper method to do this would be star nine. Uh, if you are on a computer, there should be a button that says, shows a hand or says raise hand. If you do that, I will be happy to unmute you so that you can speak on this issue. I'm going to give about 30 seconds on this issue if you can indicate that you want to speak. Uh, that's very good. Uh, we have a individual who wishes to speak and you should be unmuted. I believe your name is Daniel. Uh, please say your name and address for the record and give any comments that you might have. Uh, please keep in mind that we generally keep this to a three-minute time limit.
Yes, my name is Daniel Marsland. I live at 761 Presidential Drive and I just wanted to call in to comment that I, I hope that you approve this variance for Mr. Paloka. Uh, in, in the past, we have had issues with Paloka and, and the property keep up with stuff that was laid out along his property. And, uh, because they built the larger shed, they are, this is part of their work. They do carpentry and since then, over the past year, his property has looked immaculate and the shed is very nice and I just hope that you give him variance for it.
Very good. Thank you very much, sir, for your comments. Um, and, uh, I'm going to, to re-mute you, but we appreciate you attending this evening and then speaking on this issue. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, please raise your hand either by hitting star nine on a phone or by raising your hand on the computer app. Seeing no other hands raised, we are going to proceed on. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this issue? I will take, we're going to take motions separately just to make sure that we, we maintain a little bit more of a line in this format. So I'm going to ask for questions or comments first and then we'll proceed the motions after that. Uh, hearing none, um, I am going to give a quick comment myself and that would be that reviewing the parcel, um, this is probably a borderline one, but I, I do think I understand both Mr. Box's point and the petitioner's point that the inside measurements of the shed are, are pretty close to our requirement of floor area. Um, and I would also find it compelling if he was replacing a, if he was replacing a blighted structure with, with a better built structure. This one does appear to be considerably more suitable for the township than something that was not useful and causing other stuff to be stored outside. Uh, with that, I would move us on to motions. Is there any motions on this issue?
Member Posey will make a motion to approve-
There's a motion on the floor?
-the zoning ordinance.
Member Posey, I think we, we lost a little bit of that. Could you restate the motion, please?
Yes. Uh, member Posey makes a motion to approve the variance request from section 10.0331 to allow a 216 square foot accessory building shed.
Motion by member Posey to grant the variance based on her, her comments. Uh, is there any support?
Member Slosson supports.
Uh, there's a motion by member Posey, supported by member Slosson, and then I'm going to call the roll. Member Posey?
Yes.
Member Slosson?
Yes.
Member DeCoster?
Yes.
Member Tuckfield votes yes. Member Piper?
Yes.
That motion passes. The variance is approved. Uh, thank you, Mr. Paloka, for your attendance tonight. My apologies for the delay, both tonight and the last couple of months. Appreciate you sticking with us for it.
No problem. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You as well.
All right. With that, we're going to move on to item six C. This is a variance request from the zoning ordinance, section 10.0311 EF3, to allow an enclosed swimming pool to be located eight feet, zero inches from a principal structure where a minimum 10 feet is typically required. This request is a dimensional variance of two feet. Uh, this is located at 50092 Knightsbridge, permanent parcel 0821279001, and Susan Dombrowski is the petitioner. Mr. Box, could you walk us through this, please?
Sure. Um, so again, this is located in section 21, south of 23 Mile, and west of Haydenreich, uh, Knightsbridge. Um, this lot is on a corner and it has some setbacks, really on, on three different sides that kind of make it a, a unique property. Uh, it can be difficult to, to build, um, in general, let alone trying to put a pool on the property. Um, so by having a 16 by 32-foot pool, they do go two feet into the setback. Um, we have a setback requirement of 10 feet. This would put it only eight feet from the principal structure. Um, I do understand that the pool, the 16 by 32, is a standard size of a pool. Uh, and so in addition to already having the setbacks, if it were required to be only 14 by 32 or 14 by something else, it would be kind of a custom-built pool. Could be a lot more costly. Um, and, and in general, we do definitely see a hardship on this property and the department is recommending approval.
Very good, Mr. Box. Is there any questions for the planning director?
This is Dave Piper. Uh, I do have a question as far as the setbacks. Are all the houses on that street, do they also have, there's a 10-foot setback between houses? Is that on both sides of every house as well?
Correct.
So the, all the other houses that still also have three-sided setbacks, just not as big because it's on a corner, correct?
This house, I believe, has a larger setback off of, um, I'm, I'm drawing a blank on the road, but it's not-
Castleton.
Castleton. Uh, a larger setback off of that, um, which makes the, the property, uh, you know, again, the buildable area smaller. And I do believe this parcel actually might be smaller than some of the other parcels in that neighborhood, again, because it's a corner lot as well.
Uh, okay. I'm sorry, but I have one more question, too. The, the 10-foot rule, is that, isn't that a safety issue, though, versus the eight feet? Isn't that why it was put in place at 10 feet?
From the principal structure?
Yes.
Typically, it's a safety concern, yes.
In your opinion, though, that the two feet won't cause a safety issue, then?
The petitioner has, has outlined, uh, in your packet, if you see, a layout of where the pool would be, uh, and, and I know, uh, Mr. Tuckfield and myself spoke about this earlier today, actually. Uh, usually that, the safety concern is if someone coming out, like a door wall, um, you know, it's possible to trip out of a door wall and, and then potentially into a pool. Uh, the location here, um, I don't believe is near the door wall.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure I had all my facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. Is there any other? Go ahead, Ms. Posey.
Uh, thank you. Um, I have a question for Mr. Box. It says in our packet that relief can be granted in such fashion that the spirit of the ordinance will be observed and public safety and welfare secured. How do we, if we were to approve this variance, how to, how do we secure public safety and welfare?
Where?
If that's something we have to include in our motion or is that just on the petitioner?
I think for the most part, that's on the petitioner. Where are you referring to that in your packet?
Uh, it's, but done by Carlisle Wortman's letter. Dave Secuto wrote it in his, um, it is number three. Uh, let's see. Under review criteria, item number three. It does say that the findings, the request has no impact on public safety from a zoning perspective. I just want to know that if we make a motion to approve, if we have to include anything about public, um, or, I'm sorry, public safety and welfare?
I think, uh, what Dave is referring to, now that I'm reading this, uh, this comment by them, is that, you know, the spirit of the ordinance, they are still abiding by the setbacks as much as possible in, in the fact that public safety and welfare would be secured, again, as the pool not being located so close to the door wall.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. That's all I have, chairman.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Posey. Any other questions for Mr. Box? Hearing none, we will move on to the petitioner. I believe the petitioner is in the audience. I'm going to activate you, Ms. Dombrowski, and if you could, state your name and address. I think you're unmuted. Hang on. There we are. I think you're unmuted now. If you could state your name and address for the record and also if you have anyone else that will need to be speaking with you or on your behalf, please let me know so that I can make sure that they are unmuted.
My name is Sue Dombrowski. My address, 50092 Knightsbridge here in Macomb. Um, just moved into the house in the fall and was looking at putting in a built-in pool structure, but the yard was a little bit unusual, so needed to request the variance. Um, yeah, I'm just leaving it up to you guys whether it'll be approved or not. I don't have anyone else, you know, with me in the audience.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Dombrowski. Uh, I'm, I'm going to leave you unmuted. Uh, we may have some questions for you and I'll, I'll probably leave you unmuted until we go to the motion. Uh, but if you could, just make sure that, that you don't, you don't speak until we get to a point where we're asking for you, if you could. Um, with that, I would ask the board if they have any questions for Ms. Dombrowski. Hearing none, I'm going to take it to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this issue? If you wish to do so, please hit star nine on your phone to raise your hand or if you are on an app, on a tablet, or on a desktop, please hit the hand button on your program to show that you would like to speak. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board. Is there any further questions or comments from the board on this issue? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Are there any motions on this issue?
This is member DeCoster.
Chairman?
Go ahead, member DeCoster.
Okay. I would, uh, I would make a motion to approve the variance based on the practical difficulty with the amount of usable yard area. Um, that's based on the three-sided setbacks, the back and the two sides. So my motion would be to approve the variance.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. DeCoster. Is there any support for that motion?
Member Post-
Support.
Uh, member Posey supports. There may have been some conversation on there before we go to a, a vote. Was there any discussion on this motion? Hearing no discussion, I'm going to move forward to a vote. Um, this is going to be, again, a roll call vote. Member DeCoster?
Yes.
Member Posey?
Yes.
Member Slosson?
Yes.
Member Piper?
Yes.
Member Tuckfield votes yes. That motion is approved and that variance has been granted. Uh, thank you, Ms. Dombrowski. I hope you have a good evening and thanks for your patience with us on getting through some technical issues here.
Thank you.
Good night. All right. Uh, with that, the next item on our agenda is item D, review of rules, uh, ZBA rules and procedures. Uh, I am happy to go over this tonight. However, uh, in the interests of time and making sure we get out of here, I, I thought it might be appropriate to postpone this to our next meeting. I don't believe we are required to review these once a year and I thought in lieu of going into a holiday weekend, I thought it might be, might be good to postpone this for, uh, one month or until our next regularly scheduled meeting. That said, I am willing to talk about it if other people would like to do so and we'll entertain a motion either to postpone or discussion on the issue.
Chairman Tuck, no, I'll make a motion to postpone until we can resume back to a normal meeting.
Very good. Uh, motion by member Posey, is there support?
Member Slosson supports.
Uh, motion by Ms. Posey, uh, supported by Ms. Slosson. Is there any discussion on this, uh, motion? Hearing none, uh, we will proceed forward with a vote. Uh, member Posey?
Yes.
Member Slosson?
Yes.
Member Piper?
Yes.
Member Tuckfield votes yes. Member DeCoster?
Yes.
That motion passes and that vote, or that item, is postponed until our next, um, you, Ms. Posey, just to clarify, was that until our next regularly scheduled meeting or were you, uh, saying our next meeting in person?
Uh, me personally, I would prefer in person, but I, I'm open to what the board prefers.
Um, does anybody, we all voted on it. Um, does anybody have a concern with that? I don't know that we technically need to make a motion to move it. Um, Mr. Assorti can stop me if I do, but does anybody have a problem postponing until we are back in person having meetings? Hearing no concerns, uh, we're-
No.
Go ahead, member Slosson.
No, just going to say, I was just saying that I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Very good. Uh, hearing that, unless Mr. Assorti has any issues or concerns with the procedure on how we're doing that, I think we'll postpone that until we are back at township hall doing meetings. Uh, that said, we're moving on to item seven, old business. Uh, Mr. Box, is there any old business this evening?
There is not. There is not.
All right, very good. With that, we'll move on to item eight. That is public comments. This is for items that are not specifically related to agenda items, and you may speak for three minutes. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand digitally by hitting star nine on your phone or by hitting the hand button on your app. I'm going to give you a few seconds. I see we have a couple of members in the audience. I'll give you a time to raise your hand if you wish to speak on public comments here. Not seeing any hands raised, so I am going to close public comments and move on to item nine, which is ZBA member comments. Do any members have any comments they wish to make this evening?
This, Member Piper, I just want to say, Aaron, I think you did a good job under the circumstances. He moved right along. Other than the glitch at the start, which was beyond your control, I think it went well.
All right. Appreciate it, Mr. Piper. Thanks, everybody else, also, for bearing with it. I will say, I probably spoke about 25% faster than I normally do at the start, so hopefully everybody was able to keep track with me. Any other, any other comments from the members?
This is Member DeCosta. I just worry if we think we're going to have a meeting in August.
Mr. Box might be able to speak to this better than I can, but when I was talking to him earlier, he did indicate we have other items sitting out there, but I guess I would defer to Mr. Box. Are you expecting a meeting in August?
Uh, yes, and that's what I was going to announce, item number 10, for my comments. But yes, we do have, it looks like four items in the agenda for August 6, I believe it is. So, you know, taking six months off from this board, we've got to come back up. So we definitely will be having a meeting in August, barring anything crazy happening.
Mr. Box, this is Member Tuckfield. Just a question on that. Do you believe, we've talked about this before, and we've had a lot of special meetings in the past, and we've kind of changed our schedule around to avoid that pretty deliberately. I worked on that a couple of years ago. But do you believe the load is such that our typical meeting schedules are sufficient? Do you feel that there is a change needed at all?
No, I think they're sufficient. I mean, this, we got through our items tonight in a relatively quick fashion, especially considering we started late, and I think the items that are going, you're going to see on the agenda for next month will be just as fast, if not faster, to get through.
Okay. All right, very good. And I, and as we've talked about on this board before, I don't like special meetings for a variety of reasons, but I also like to move the business of the residents and the contractors forward as much as possible, and I don't really want it to be an impediment to that if we can help it. So if you feel like a meeting schedule should be modified, I would, I'd like to at least hear it. I don't know if the board or the Board of Trustees would allow us to, but I'd like to make sure we accommodate that if it becomes necessary. So just something to keep in mind. With that, any other comments from the members? Hearing none, I would only add my comment that I really appreciate the election as chair again. I know that I've worked hard at it, but I don't take it for granted. And I'd echo what I mentioned to a couple of you earlier in the year. I think this board does really well as a Board of Equals. We all have our perspectives, and we all have positions, but I try as much as I can to facilitate the meeting and not be the leader per se. And to that end, again, I'll echo this to, as I mentioned to you guys individually, if someone else ever wants to be the chair, I'm open to it. I'm not looking at this as a position for life, or as long as I'm allowed to be here. I'm looking at it as something that was granted to me, and I'm perfectly willing to work with somebody else if they want to do it. So I just want to throw that out there. We made it for this choice for this year, but, you know, going into next year, we're not that far away from it, fortunately or unfortunately. And if anybody has a want to do it in the future, I'm certainly opening, open to handing it, whichever people want to do. So just bear that in mind. But I still really do appreciate faith to let me, to run our, run our meetings here on a monthly basis. With that, I will move into planning director's comments. Item 10, Mr. Box, do you have any comments for us, any additional comments for us this evening?
Nope. The thing I was going to mention is that we had a long break, so we'll definitely be back next month.
Sounds good. I think we're, I think we're all ready to get back to more semblances of normal. I know we noticed that at the Planning Commission, we've been busy over there, and it's good to get back to some normal activities, even if we're doing them remotely. Our next.
A request.
Yes, Mr. Piper.
It says there are going to be several items on the next agenda. Get the information as early as possible, because as you know, I like to walk by there and inspect the properties. I want as much time to get to all of them possible.
Sure.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We have adjournment next, but I just want to throw a few thanks out there. We had some, we had some glitches in the, in the beginning of this meeting, but a couple of people worked pretty hard to make sure that they went smoothly. Member Posey, our legal counsel, Mr. Assorti, Mr. Box, and Beth Case, all, all worked to make sure we'd be able to get this meeting off on time. We were having problems right before 7:00, and while we started late, we didn't start nearly as late as if, as if we would have if everybody hadn't been able to do what they did. So just want to throw those thanks out there, and thank you to all the members and the residents who attended for making this a smooth meeting. It's unusual times, but it helps when we all roll with it. So thank you to everybody. And with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Member Lawson.
Member Piper, I'll make that motion.
I think I heard Member Lawson first. I'll say a motion by Member Lawson. Mr. Piper, or Mr. Piper, you want to support it?
I will support that.
All right, very good. Motion by Lawson, supported by Piper, to adjourn this meeting. I'm going to call the roll. Member Lawson.
Yes.
Member Piper.
Yes.
Member Tuckfield votes yes. Member DeCosta.
Yes.
Member Posey.
Yes.
That vote is unanimous. We are adjourned at 7:44. Thank you, everyone. Have a very good night, a great Fourth of July, and see you next month.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night.